One, two, three.
Who else is meeting tonight then? Who's down there?
Emily Wetlands.
Oh, is it?
Okay, seven o'clock. Let's call the January eighth. Twenty seventy five Z V A Minjor Order. When it's Stephen Sherman, my work is on Manning. The secretary is right to Smith, we got Miller. We did very Bill Hunter, alternate city in as a regular manner. And Bruce Inger also an alternate sitting in this region. So we have a whole question. Two items of course, the C J, the Department and the Secretary will read the call. Check the man is required, must us to go. First time you see, please who was your name and address? Anything, any other time may I review and record a video, so. But just repeat your name. At the. What's going to be at the presentation? Board will probably ask questions. After that, with the term with the re-incomings. While. Or any of those town agencies or the post. At the conclusion of the second public hearing. I will discuss. Are you welcome to remain and speak. But the center make a decision in the same evening. Tell the boss on private post. And must sit to begin.
Okay. Where do you go? Okay, the variance. Twenty four dash zero 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 seven. Twenty five Fort Hill Road. Andrea Verilla applicant, Mockberry Town of Groton owner. For variances of section five point one. Dash three G two. Five point one dash three. G dash three. And eight point one dash six B three. To reduce the required buffers. In order to construct athletic fields. In a multi-use path. Pin number two, six. Zero eight, zero nine, zero six, three, eight, eight, six. E G R zone. For the. A little bit of information, this is kind of a unique situation here. What's unique about it is. The mailings were reviewed. Back on the eleventh of December. Twenty twenty four. And on that date. It was postponed. From the normal. Meeting. Phone call from Sue. Noting that due to the weather, this meeting was postponed to January twenty twenty five. Now. The mailings were moved and I checked them out. There was one issue on the mailings and that was a. Postscript that had. The. What happened was. It was correct. But the post office had put the wrong. Address. For the state. The most, and you can. And I see. Is it Andrea? No. We have a replacement.
All right, would you like me to start?
Yes.
Some stuff up. Um, and so to fill that in a little bit.
This is Chad Frost.
Thank you for reminding me. Chad Frost. Principal of Kent Cross Landscape Architecture here in Mystic. Andrea, who filed the paperwork through the town's web portal is one of my employees. Um. As was referenced, we did do all the legal notices for the meeting that should have been last month. It was picked up on that there was when the. Postmaster transpose all of the addresses onto the mailings. He put one with incorrect state, but had the correct zip code. We were confirmed through the postmaster that it was delivered to the correct address, even though it has the wrong state, but has the right zip code. The zip code supersede, so it's tight in the state. All were received. And we got confirmation back one, we actually got one sent back to us, which was interesting from the applicant or from the recipient. Saying that they received it, and that was actually the school board, which sent us one back, which first time we've ever gotten one back. Um. But as was mentioned, we're here tonight on behalf of the town, on behalf of Park and Rec. We are in the process of doing renovations to Sutton Park, which is right down at the bottom of the hill. As you all know, Sutton Park has been around for several decades as an existing park. It hasn't been. Updated in decades as well, so it's in significant need of improvements. What is mostly in front of you, this is kind of the synopsis of most of the project. We're really working, most of the work is in the, what we call the north half of Sutton Park. So Sutton Park is kind of an hourglass shape. There's a larger part to the north, which is closest to Route one. It's where the skate park is, the basketball courts. Pavilion and the playground. And then the south half is a couple of baseball fields, basically softball and middle league field. Down adjacent to some additional grass with tech property. We're here tonight because of really the regulations that were put in place for. Five point one dash three G for public recreation. So that was a new regulation created with the newest version of the code. And it created some hardships for us because this is an existing condition, existing park. Two of those regulations, one require setbacks. Excuse me. Five, one, three, G two, the setbacks require all buildings and outdoor activities to be located a minimum of fifty feet from a residential property. Sutton Park and the adjoining neighborhood were built prior to this regulation, do not conform and nor can they be made to conform. Through the shape of the parcel, the pre-existing conditions and built amenities. So we're therefore seeking relief from that section. We listed the specific release we're looking for for athletic fields. Which again, there's a ball field down here, this is the outline of the larger of the ball fields. We're looking for a thirty foot setback as opposed to the fifty foot. For the existing roadway, so just to orient you, Route one is right out here. This is the driveway that comes in, goes up and serves Grosso and the new middle school. And then the new, the road that comes in and currently serves the skate park, the playground. All that, and it loops back all the way to the ball fields. We're not moving that road, we're not doing anything except improving the condition of it. However, right here, it's tightest point, it's three feet from the adjoining property line with the residential properties just to the west of it. So we can't possibly meet the fifty foot. Or we'd be on the other side of Fort Hillbrook. So we're looking for a relief to three feet on that. And then sidewalk and multi-use trails, we're actually looking for relief to a zero setback. We are the putting in a new multi-use path that winds along the edge of the property. Where we lose room and don't have enough space to put it, we're making it shared on the roadway. As it comes across and then it comes off the roadway. Comes around the ball field and goes through. About an eight foot wide area between two parcels. There's a pathway through here that connects down to the road in the neighborhood so that everybody in the neighborhood can now access into the park and up to the schools. Pedestrian wise through pedestrian pathway. But because the property lines are literally wall to wall with the pathway, we have zero setback there. Everywhere else, we do try to provide as much buffer as we can, as much setback as we can. But obviously in that location. We cannot provide that much. So that's the setbacks, the fifty foot setback. Five point one dash three G three is the buffer requirement, which requires a twenty five foot landscaped buffer between public recreation uses. And residential property lines. And again, same reason, all of this is pre-existing conditions. In places where we, where we can, we are leaving all of that. A lot of this area out here is of course closer to Route one, there's substantial amount of trees. All those light circles and dots are the existing trees. We are fortifying it with some additional evergreens in there to bolster the separation. As we get close here, where we literally run out of room between the existing road and the property lines, we're still. Hightly weaving that multi-use path between the trees, because we want to leave as many of those mature trees as possible. Adding some additional evergreens where we can, and like I said, along this path or this roadway where we literally just run out of room, we're putting it on the road. And making a shared use facility. That then creep back and come all the way through. So you just can't get that twenty five foot buffer everywhere. And as I submitted in the plans, we did provide that. As a red line, so it's easier for you guys to be able to see where that twenty five foot buffer is. And where there's areas where we just can't meet it. But there obviously there's plenty of areas where we do meet it. And the additional trees that we're planting. We try to meet the intent of that regulation. Like this is another great location here where the existing roads coming around, that's where we have our three foot separation between the property and the road. You know, and the twenty five foot buffer requirement gets us to the opposite side of the road. Which is then down inside the stream on Fort Hillbrook. This is the plan's been oriented as we come around now and go into that pathway that connects over to the. Again, showing where we're able to meet the twenty five feet in certain areas where. That's my very short synopsis is, is we're here for those two things, it's regulations that were put in place. Obviously several decades after this was already created. Historically, this was, this, the park was in a residential zone. They created that zone, that G R zone for parks, properties and moved it into that zone and then created the new regulations. And we agree with that, most of those regulations make sense with new parks coming on, but obviously for existing parks that are pre-existing. We can't go back and meet the requirements. So, any questions for me on those?
Those. And what's it gonna look like from a neighbor's point of view where? There won't be any buffer at all. Well, there's like space there, I mean, is there like, you know, open field with grass or?
Um, well, all through here, it's, it's vegetated with a lot of trees, mature trees. And some scrub growth, all of that we're leaving. And then we're adding, like I mentioned, we're adding some evergreens where we can. Along here. At its narrowest location, we're not changing anything at all. There is, for the most part, there's a bunch of evergreens right here, so this property is protected and shielded. This property has got basically lawn that goes up to their fence line. And then same here, there's lawn that goes up to the fence on, on all these sides with a scattering of overhead deciduous trees. Most of those parcels. Seem to appreciate the view into the park. And haven't put up anything to block the view. From their property into the park. Um. You know, we've, we've, there are some properties down here where we recommended adding some just because of how people might use their own backyards. And we think it's worth giving some privacy from the public, looking into the backyards of some of those neighbors. But I'll note that there's a neighbor, one of these two parcels here. That actually cut a hole in the fence, put in gates, double gates. And use that, you know, they drive, you can see where they drive their car across the lawn and through the gates and use that as an access point to their property. Which indicates to me that they don't have a problem with the current, you know, visibility going through there. So we're, we're not making it any worse, we're trying to make it better where we can.
Okay.
But simply just run out of space from that pre-existing condition. In a perfect world, we'd love to give the twenty five feet, make it a solid evergreen screen and. Make it so nobody can see back and forth.
Better, Bruce.
Well. Reiterate the choke points, if you will.
Yeah.
That one.
Yeah.
And.
Along through here. Yes, and then right in here, there's a wetland here that we have to move around. There's an outfield post that we have to also get around. That we're weaving around that, which is what gets us in.
Your plan to do any plantings there on the right hand side?
We don't, because currently this is just an open lawn. There isn't any buffer there now. These neighbors have come out and talked to us while we're out there. You know, haven't had any issues. They're more concerned to make sure we're actually doing some things to improve some of the drainage. They had some questions about flooding and the drainage. All the water basically from this neighborhood. Slowly flows through this way, and when these drain tires get backed up, then it backs up into their yard, so they're more concerned about that than. Hearing kids playing baseball or softball. Or seeing them. And again, I think because these fields have been there since the nineteen sixties. Most of the people, the fields pre-exist when they purchased the houses or moved in to live there.
Okay.
I've ridden my bike back there a number of times. I, but I can't remember, there's a chain link fence all along. All along there, as I, as I recall, right here. And then. The passageway down there, is that? Is that the town's? Six foot walls or is that each, each neighbor's six foot fences there?
Each neighbor has their fence on either side, so one's a solid, like vinyl fence.
Yeah, once, the, the one on the south side, solid vinyl, I can't remember the other one.
The other one, like with a whole lot of stuff growing.
Yeah, it grows in, you gotta cut it back every year, okay.
Yeah.
So you're not doing anything with that other than?
We are not replacing the fences at all, we're just putting through a new asphalt pathway that will be level and smooth.
Oh, good.
And I should note, there are solar lights along the path. So the solar lights that were put at Aquanic Plains Park, those are gonna be along the path all the way through to be able to provide nighttime passage. The only exception is in that narrow area. We didn't want to put the pole lights there because it would put light onto the neighboring property, so we actually did solar bothered lights during that little stretch.
The town owns that little.
This little connector that.
Connect, okay.
Yeah.
This is me, when I ride my bike through there, you come out and you're, and you run right into a, a telephone pole there. Yeah, it's, you, you can't, yeah, but I'm not sure, you can't do it.
At this point, we can't do anything about it, but it's on the list of if things can move, because there's driveways, they both, both the two drivers are right there, so there's a lot of conflicts, but. But yeah, it will come out right there, and then from there, it's an on-road painted facility that connects down to Block Four.
Oh, you're, oh, you're painting roads all the way?
We are painting the symbols, yeah, the charros and things like that on the road to go all the way down to the entrance to Block Four.
Good, okay.
Yeah.
Um. Obviously, there's no other location that could do this.
Nope.
I mean, this is unique. What is driving it? Is it just that you have the ability to? Put a lot of things?
Well, it's the need to put improvements into a park that hasn't gotten any. Infrastructure for quite a while, right? So the existing playscape is in desperate need of replacement. The parking lot, if you've driven through there, it's falling apart, patched in about a hundred different places. The basketball court needs replacement, we're adding a basketball court, you know, we went through a long public process to see what the public wanted out of this project to rejuvenate Sutton Park. And bring it back into a thing town can be proud of. And then additionally, that multi-use path is part of the overall town's multi-use bike pit. Master plan, and so trying to get access for pedestrians and bicyclists to get through here and make that connection was an important part too.
So the hardship is that it abuts.
The hardship is truly, as I mentioned, it is the shape of the lot, it's the pre-existing non-conforming things, and it's the fact that the zone was created, this the. The zoning regulations were created after the park was created that can't meet those regulations.
Are you gonna repave the road too, because that road is kinda?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And we're gonna, some of that's gonna be a little, I'll say money dependent as to timing and when it happens and whether. If the contractor's doing it as part of the overall project or if Public Works comes in and does the mill and repave when the contractor's done.
We're not talking about, but you're, you're, are you redoing the, the pavilion too, on the other side of the road and stuff as part of this project?
The, the wooden pavilion that's there, that, the wooden pavilion stage is the bigger one. The smaller one that's closer to this gate park goes away. And we replace it with, I think right now we have three other pavilion structures around the skate park. For new chain structures. Because that one, the, the smaller one that's there is in terrible condition. The big wooden one, the octagon shaped one is in good enough condition that we want to leave it, we're not going to be expensive replacing.
Our questions have been answered. I don't see anybody here or on Zoom to speak either in favor or opposition. Do you need anything from planning side?
Uh, planning and zoning, commission had no comments.
Okay, anything else, Chad?
That's it for me.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll call the public hearing to a close at just seven nineteen. Thank you. Tom?
Okay, we are all set. All right, the second public hearing tonight is V A R twenty four dash zero 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 eight. Forty two High Street. Peter Spring Steel applicant. Thomas and Geraldine. Tabor owners setback, you saw us.
We have a question for Tom.
Who?
On the application. Indicates this is a cam zone.
It's probably, no, there's no possible way.
Just to know.
It would be exempt from CAM anyways because of the. Type of.
Read on as you can, but.
Yeah, there's no.
Alright, good.
Before we continue, I just want to mention that I've reviewed the mailings. And they comply with the requirements. Coming in of section. Just to comply with section nine, one. Dash eight. Dash B notice of the mailings. Comply, so I just want to state that.
Okay, well, that.
Good evening, commissioners, Peter Spring Steel Architects here tonight representing Tom and Geraldine Tabor. Owners of forty two High Street in Mystic. We do have a location map here. This is located on the sort of the end of High Street near downtown. It's kind of up on the hill. And the house, towers, when you're down on Water Street, the block below, you think the house is way up in the air. Just to orient you where this house is. And then that thought there is the property location. This is the site plan. High Street's running along here. North is this way. South is that way. There's a very steep cliff. That runs along the back property line here, drops way down twenty or thirty feet. And then Water Street would be down here and then I think it's Steamboat. Be across the street on Water Street to give you an idea. Where it is. There's a Steamboat water right there. What we're proposing to do here is add simply a deck. Uncovered with a stairway. The house is an historic home, built way before the zoning regulations, it's obviously pre-existing, non-conforming. And its location on the lot. These red lines indicate the setbacks, we have our side yard, six foot side yard setbacks. Uh, front yard is twenty five. This is in the R seven zone. So your front yard requirement is only ten feet. Naturally. So rear yard is twenty five feet. So that's this line here. Conforming in the front yard, we're conforming in the side yards, but the majority of the house, as you can see, is totally in the backyard setback. And again, that's pre-existing, non-conforming. There is a slight. Pitch in the land, it's higher at this end of the property and it drops down. This end. So at this end of the property, you're a couple of steps up to the, to the doorway and to a deck that's already here. On this side of the property, it's dropped down far enough so that there's a walk adjacent on this side here. That you can see in this photo right here. So there's already a porch that wraps around the house. And this deck would project out from that porch. To make a. Larger usable area, the porch is only about six feet deep, so it's very hard to use. Or anything other than passageway. In this photograph, that deck would be right off of this section here. There's a bay window there, which we would convert to a door. This would have then direct access from the kitchen dining family right out onto this porch here and there's a fabulous view, of course. In that location. There's also garage structure here. The lot is conforming. The lot is conforming in terms of its size, in the R-seven zone, you gotta have seven thousand square feet, this lot is a little over nine thousand square feet. Um, so the additional footprint that we're adding meets the regulation. Um, so really, the only, um, uh, variance we're seeking is for the rear yard setback. Presently, the house is two foot um rear, it's two foot four at the setback at the closest point. We're proposing to bring that to five foot three at the stairway here. And of course, the deck is further in. I've done a preliminary hearing with the, um, Historic District Commission and their preference was for me to push this deck towards the back uh to preserve the more, um, historic front of this house, um, which would be here. And that's the front of the house, so they prefer these additions, more modern additions get pushed to the back uh so they don't conflict with the, um, more historic features of the front of the house. So I have done that, um, in this layout. So our hardship here really is one of being in a pre-existing, non-conforming situation. This lot is unique in that it's very long in this direction and very shallow, front to back. So you can see the bigger requirements for those rear yard setbacks has a big impact on this particular property. Only fifty-two feet length here and sixty-eight feet on this side here, so at the point of the deck, it's probably about sixty feet deep. So you take out that twenty-five and ten, that's thirty-five, it chews up a good portion of the lot. So by virtue of the location, the, the pre-existing, non-conforming location, um, we're proposing this deck in that position. Um, there's also the idea that there's a, there's a slope to this lot. If you put a deck in the rear yard setback and it's within thirty inches of the grade, it would be a conforming deck. Um, so because this is sloping here, our first floor is then becomes above the grade here, it's more at grade at this end. Um, so on a flat lot, this might be a more conforming situation. There's no bulk to the deck. In other words, there's no walls, there's no roof. So it's really just outdoor space that we're creating here. And we would be happy to stipulate that it could never be built on and enclosed. So essentially, that's my presentation, I'd be happy to take your questions.
Bruce? Oh, no questions.
No.
Phil? All my questions were answered, thank you.
So.
The, the rear outline, is that is that a straight down from there? That, is that the cliff or is that?
Yeah, you can see the grade lines here really close together. So you can, there's a chain link fence they have run along there, you peek over that and it goes right down. And you'll note that where the buildings are here, the neighbors are actually off to the side, there's some buildings down here. And there's some buildings over here, but in this section here, there's no buildings where we're proposing the deck. Um, did approach his abutters and showed him what we were doing and they didn't seem to complain. I don't know if any letters came in or not.
So obviously, whatever, whoever the abutters are, opens that cliff up, up to that property line then?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's pretty hard to maintain.
Mm-hmm. Now, is that, that's all, is that ledge there?
Yeah.
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 Okay. All right, thanks.
Um. What's the age? Do you know what the age is?
Sixty-five.
Eighteen sixty-five? So that predates well.
A little bit.
And, uh, so this is, you're just not gonna cover that.
Correct, just an open deck.
You mentioned that that could be made a stipulation if you.
Be happy with that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I have no questions, I can't for the regular, she's probably in zone or in the room, anything from planning zone?
Uh, the planning and zoning commission hasn't met, uh, since this application has been submitted.
Anything else, Sarah?
That's it.
Okay.
One, one question, the, the, did the Stark District submit anything?
I was there preliminarily, they didn't, uh, there was no final decision, I think we're supposed to give the variance before HTC rules on these things.
There, there's no, uh, there, there, there's no actual, um, policy of what comes first uh or what comes second, chicken and egg situation, so it's more, they're more dis- uh, concerned with details, uh, railings, overhangs, whatnot, not the actual locations.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, it's seven thirty, call the public hearing to a close. Assess, assess. Bruce, on the first one, uh. General Court.
Oh, I'm fine with that. Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with that whole park project anyway, and it, it's a difficult, uh thing to put together, everything that you want for that park and not infringe upon something or other, it's just, it's so sprawling and it's right in the middle of everything, so I, I think that's a reasonable compromise.
Phil?
I, I support the application as presented.
As my question.
I also support it, I think that there's a definite hardship in order to do what is intended to be done in that area to improve this community. So I clearly have no problem with it.
Yeah, I sent it, any bother leave down at the very end. It's very rough shape, so this plan is a big complaint. Motion, please.
Make a motion that we, um, accept the, uh, applications presented.
Your second?
I'll second.
Bruce? Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both, carriage and enter see. All right, we're along to, uh, forty-two High Street. Bruce?
Uh, sounds like it's okay to me. Phil?
I don't have a problem with that, it doesn't increase the, uh, non-conformity, um, and so smart project and neighbors are all involved and support it.
Um, I can support it, but I would put that proviso in that it can't be covered or anything, it's just, it's just the deck.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
They're a lot, okay. Tom?
Uh, for the appearance sake, I happen to own, or my wife owns, and I own a building close in to that area. And, uh, just for the sake of identification, one High Street. So, uh, essentially, I don't have a hardship. I mean, I think there is a clearly a hardship because the building clearly predates zoning. So, and I think it's a minor thing. I would like to see that that stipulation that it not be covered just so that the next person coming along says, oh, was a variance created with this? We can do what we wanna do. Like to make sure that that's in the stip, as a stipulation. So I think there's a hardship clearly.
I have no problem, Doug, you wanna make a question? And you wanna make a question?
Sure. I, I moved that we approved the requested variance with a stipulation that the deck that's, uh, will be built in this, uh, variance cannot be covered.
Your second?
Okay.
Second by Bruce. More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both, um, good, granted, I'll say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, let's see, Sean, uh, our phones.
Uh, we have no correspondence. Got, I'm just passing this around though.
Oh, did I mention, was that these?
I already seen it.
These are for you to take.
It's a simple.
Just to schedule a meeting. I checked it out.
Just wanted to make sure, did I mention that, um, I had to get the mailings work?
You did both times.
Same time, yes, just wanna make sure, as you get older, you get forgetful.
So, uh, voting on the calendar.
Um, we already voted on the calendar, um, we just wanted to make sure you had a copy and we need, uh, Tom, we need to have you sign that one and return it to me, right? Your pen.
So.
Okay, um, minutes. From George, for a long time. Washington?
Yes. I, I looked him over and, and, and they looked, they looked at me, so I looked him over like a month and two ago.
They not take it out of their pay.
Yeah, I know, no. I moved it, we approved the minutes as written.
Mm-hmm, there was also seconds, okay. Uh, over.
Aye, aye.
Only one slide on the last page, no access.
Okay, it's funny, uh, which vote is up there, oh, for the adjournment, there is just no access for us, okay.
Um, all business.
Uh, we have no old business.
Oh, no.
We have no new applications.
Wow. Uh, officers.
Election of officers. Anyone wanna change? Stay the same? Someone make a motion to continue the current?
How many, how many, um, permanent members do we have appointed now? Do we have a full, a full five-member board?
No.
What do we have?
This is it.
Joe Floyd's here.
Phil and I are all two.
Right? No, I mean.
Four is.
Floyd is a member.
Probably have four.
We have four, so are they gonna appoint another?
When they find someone or when someone steps up.
What's that you take care of, Jeff Person?
Say that again?
What's that you care, Jeff Person, Doug, it's what?
Yes.
Took care of him. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, there's, there has been no one nominated or selected or, or no volunteers, I guess, it's also.
Uh, typical in the past, I'm actually, I usually get a uh a request from the personnel committee to re- to recommend somebody, I have not received anything, so.
Okay.
I don't, it's up to them.
You guys aren't rocking any boats, so.
Miss Boris, okay, uh, so was there a motion or what?
Oh, I'll move that we continue with the same slate that we have now.
Second?
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Both, carriage and I'll say, Seth, before?
I have none.
Jeez, suspense.
Yeah.
Motion, George?
Oh, no.
Doc?
Do you have anything upcoming?
There is no upcoming applications. That's it, this was the winter pileup.
The crunch of the year.
Is there a second, just a question?
Just a question, I, aren't there some applications, I thought there were like two or three.
These were them, this was it.
This was, this was it.
Yeah, because we had, because the one, because the Sutton Park was supposed to be December and because of that major storm we had, we decided to continue it, and so this is it.
May and second, all in favor, George? Aye.
Aye.
Seven thirty-eight.
When did they figure on having Sutton Park, like, done? Is there, like, any kind of a timeframe on that?
Um, I know they're going to, the, um.